Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Wow, I should have been a teacher, that felt great. Now I know why teachers like to teach, they get instant feedback. Welcome to the regularly scheduled council meeting of the Apex Town Council, December 3rd, 2019. I will, before we get started, I will say a couple of quick things. One is unless you're in uniform tonight performing your service, you need to be in a chair in order to be compliant with the fire law. If you can grab us a chair or scoot to the middle and help point one out so that people can fit in, let's make sure they can. We do have an overflow room upstairs, so if you cannot get into a seat, don't fret because up the elevator, one floor, is television and some chairs, and you're welcome to watch the proceedings from there. We'll take one moment for people to get seated. It's no time to be shy. All right, very good, thank you. And also, as a matter of procedure, we have a cellphone here that maybe got left behind, so I'm gonna pass it over towards the clerk. If it is yours, she has it, there's an update on Joe Montana on there, in case you're looking for that. All right, and lastly, we have a sign-in sheet for public forum, the blue sheet there if you want to sign that. The programs are outside, if you didn't get one, I'd maybe advise looking on next door because if you get up, you might lose your seat. But we did have a full house tonight, thank you for coming, everyone. I'd like to go straight into now our invocation. I've invited Dr. Zeb Cook, the new pastor for Apex Baptist Church, to come bring us our invocation tonight. Dr. Cook?
Let's pray together. Father, this is a day that you have made, and we thank you for it. God, we thank you for the opportunity we have to breathe air today. God, we know it's a great privilege just to be here tonight. And so, Lord, we pray for your wisdom, we pray for your guidance. Lord, we ask that you are pleased in everything that is said and done in this room. God, we thank you for the freedom that we have in this country, and we would be remiss if we didn't remember the men and women who have sacrificed all so that we could be free. Lord, thank you for that. Lord, we thank you for our public service workers, God, all the effort that they put in. God, we know that it's sometimes quite a difficult job, it's a difficult task, and so, Lord, we pray that you'll just encourage them, help them to know that they are loved and that we care for them, and, God, we just thank you for the wonderful city that we live in. Well, we know that we are incredibly blessed. Father, we know that there are many cities that are struggling, many cities that are having very difficult seasons even now as I pray, and so, Lord, we recognize our blessing, but, God, we also want to help those that are in need. God, we don't want to forget our neighbors. Father, we know that we are all different, we come from different backgrounds, God, we have different beliefs, different views on things, but, Lord, we know that we are called to love our neighbors, and so, I pray tonight that we love you and that we love one another. I pray for communal unity, God, that we will unite, God, that we will represent you well in the way that we love one another. Father, we thank you for Mayor Lance, God, we just thank you for all the effort that he has put into his position, Lord, the passion that he has to do what he has done, the care he has for this city, God, we're grateful for that. We thank you for Mr. Jacques, God, we are so grateful that you have raised up this man to continue on, and we look forward to how you're gonna use him in tremendous ways, and so, we just pray for him. God, give him wisdom, give him guidance, God, lead him well. Father, we ask that you will help us to be the men and women that you would have us to be, God, that we would be men and women of integrity and character, and, God, that we would be pleasing to you. So, once again, thank you for life, thank you for this day, thank you for the opportunity we have to gather in this free country, and, Lord, the governance that you allow us to enjoy, we thank you for that. But we also remember those around the world who are suffering right now. God, be with them, encourage them, and, God, help us to be your hands and feet as we minister to those around us, and we pray this, in Jesus' name, amen.
Please join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we get into the presentations, some recognitions, we have some folks here today, elected officials, and this is in no particular order except for the order they were seen and written down. Wake County Commissioner Greg Ford, and Chair, as I understand, Mayor of Town of Morrisville, T.J. Colley, there he is, okay, Vicki Adamson, Vice Chair of Wake County Commission, Julie Van Haven, NC House 36. Also, I'd like to recognize a former council member, town manager, and mayor, Bill Sutton in the back there, and also, former councilperson Denise Wilkie, I'm told, oh, there you are, okay, great, and former town manager Bruce Radford. Now, if you would have fit in one of these categories and I didn't call your name, it's no slight other than that we didn't see you, but I'm happy to recognize you if you'd raise your hand or make yourself known. All right, thank you. We'll now move into presentations. So, the first presentation is one that I've been excited about all weekend to make today, and I'd like to call up here Savannah Morrell, and Savannah, your parents, Jim and Sarah. And if you'll just hang right here, and I'll read this to everyone, and then I'll come down, all right?
Dear Savannah, it is with utmost respect and appreciation that I express on behalf of the Town of Apex our gratitude for your selfless act of courage displayed on July 11th, 2018, as you saved a three-year-old girl, Anya, from drowning. It was reported that as the excited three-year-old, Anya was walking the deck of the community pool to the deep end, she jumped in as if she was in the shallow end. You immediately recognized that she was in danger and swam to her and worked to raise her to the surface and keep her head above water even while struggling yourself to breathe and to keep your own head above water. Once others in the area noticed that something was amiss, they came to your aid, they helped pull Anya from the pool and allowed you to swim to the side and exit the pool yourself. Your recent training in swimming through the American Heritage Girls Program gave you the skills and confidence to react appropriately to help another person in distress. The saving of another's life is one of the most praiseworthy acts a person can perform. Many thanks for your courage and your quick thinking. Your example of selfless service to another is one we should all emulate. That is the kind of thing that I think we all should strive to, look at our fellow human beings with compassion, no matter what, whether we agree or disagree with anything, everyone matters. And sometimes, truth comes from a child. Thank you for your patience. Mr. Town Manager, there was another presentation, sir?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mark Blatchford.
Okay, all right, thank you. Mr. Blatchford.
What a hard act to follow. Mr. Mayor, members of Town Council, I'm Mark Blatchford, and I'm here representing the 2019 class of the Apex Peak Academy, and there are a number of my classmates here who like them to stand and be recognized. Where's the class of 2019? Incredibly, it was just over six months ago, we gathered for our first meeting in the conference room upstairs, not really knowing what to expect. I think many of us thought we'd get sort of a 30,000-foot view of the town, kind of know the town's missions and various departments, and, boy, were we wrong. Thanks to the wonderful leadership of Donna Host, the town clerk, and her team, we retreated to the most in-depth, exciting, fun look at the inner workings of the Town of Apex. It was incredible, from the administrative staff and all they do to bring the town together, to the Parks Department, which talked about all their wonderful programs for people of all ages, they took us out to the parks and showed us even some of the parks that haven't been developed yet, the Public Works Department, which showed us how to put cameras down into pipes and see where the blockages were, the Fire Department, which talked about the challenges they faced, but then took us outside and had us hold one of those fire hoses, took probably three or four of us to do that, showed us how to put out a fire. The Police Department was wonderful, they've got a good sense of the day-to-day challenges they have, we even got to walk in their shoes and do little scenarios where we had to go to a traffic stop and see what they had to do, or confront somebody who looked suspicious. We didn't fare very well in that one. The Water Department, we saw where the water comes in from the lake and how it's purified and all the tests it has to go through, we saw the wastewater at the back end of that and got a chance to smell it as it came in, and look how clean it was at the back end. Public Works, the Electric Department, showed us all the different kinds of wires they have to deal with, they even took us up, those who were brave enough, in a 60-foot bucket truck, which they used to get up to the very top of the highest wire pit to fix. It was such an incredible experience, and I think that there was sort of a friendly competition among the departments as to who was gonna be voted the best presentation, and I think we never took a formal vote, but if we had, it would have been everybody. They were all so good, we could not have chosen one, they were all so good. But I think if there were three key takeaways that we had from this experience, the first was how incredibly complex it is to run a town like this. It's an incredible challenge, and I think the citizens really don't have an appreciation for it unless you really get into and see what they have to do. The second was the people we elect, they were incredibly dedicated to making this town run well, they were intelligent, they were smart, they were forward-thinking, they were clear on their explanations, they answered our questions, we came back with a sense that the town is in really good hands. And then the third thing is taxpayers, I think we came away with the sense that our tax dollars are being carefully managed and well-invested, and we really appreciate that. So, to show our appreciation, we wanted to present a plaque to you on behalf of the class, and with us goes our hope that you will see to have future classes that can go through this process. The plaque reads very quickly, "Peak Academy Class of 2019, our heartfelt thanks to the Town and Council for this amazing opportunity." Thank you very much.
If it's all right with y'all, I'm gonna pass this to Donna, I think she might be able to find a good place for that. And I will say, Mark, just before you leave, Mark, I just want to say thank you, but I also recognize this, this is a great thing that I hope continues on for a long time because we've seen the benefit, we've seen people become engaged and knowledgeable, and they can help put facts out on social media where sometimes the staff can't quite get fast enough, right, because everybody's in HOA, which is in a Facebook group, which has an opportunity to put some information out there that's true. Not everything that is assumed about municipal government is true, and so, it's really nice to be able to see more people out there becoming advocates and understanding exactly how things work. Thank you, Mark, for that. And also, just thank you, Donna, for continuing to do that, that certainly has been a great thing. We now move to consent agenda, as usual, consent agenda are items that are approved with a single motion, they are typically considered to be non-controversial. If, however, a council member wishes to have one pulled for later consideration, they certainly can request that. I've not received any notification that anyone wishes to do so, so a motion would be in order unless somebody decides they would like to pull one.
I'll make the motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second for approval of the consent agenda. All in favor, let me ask for discussion. Okay, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right, consent agenda is passed, we now move to the regular meeting agenda. I've not been informed of any changes from here to the end. If there are no changes, then I will entertain a motion to approve the meeting agenda as written.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second discussion. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. All right, the regular meeting is set, we have public forum, we have, one person has signed up, Ms. Kimberly Pearson, come on up, and as Ms. Pearson is coming up, just a quick reminder, this is the three-minute time period where we listen to an individual, we get to hear what you have to say. There is a three-minute window with the green light, yellow light, red light system, so please begin by stating your name and address.
Kimberly Pearson, 3073 Mavish Bank Circle. I'm part of the Buckhorn Preserve Community. I know a couple of weeks ago, the Belacasa Community came in, kind of in an uproar about the Electrical Operations Center. I'm really just curious, I know from that meeting you guys made a long list of things that you were considering for the Operations Center to help mitigate some of the impact it has on the community, so I was curious about that. And really, my big takeaway from that is Milano is the main passageway to the facility, totally get that, I'm fine with it, but it cuts right through the middle of our development and our community, and my concern is just being able to get my mail or letting kids go to the bus stop and stuff like that, so I was just wondering if there was any looking into adding crosswalks, speed bumps, something like that, because already the construction crew blows through there super fast. So, with that concern, you know, I have a three-year-old, and eventually, he's gonna go wait at a bus stop, or he's gonna go run to the pool with his friend, and I must a little concerned about that and anything the town can do to really help. And again, just follow up on if you have made any decisions or gotten any information on the mitigation.
All right, thank you, Ms. Pearson.
Thanks.
And I'll respond, let me close the public hearing, and I'll refer that to the town manager, I know the staff is working on several of the things, it may take them a little time to get through that and then come back to council with some suggestions and pricing, so maybe a little while.
Correct.
Okay.
Fine, aren't you curious?
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, I'll now close the public hearing, public forum, with no other items here, we move all the way down to new business, and we move to the recognition of outgoing council members. Mr. Town Manager, was there a preferred order? I will begin, if that's all right, Councilmember Moyer, Councilman Moyer, and I believe the town clerk has something for you, but I would like to give you the floor at this time and start out by saying thank you for your four years of service and appreciate all the thought and input you've given to this council.
I appreciate it, yeah, it's been my pleasure to be up here for four years, serving the town that I grew up in, and I just pray for the incoming council that we remember where Apex came from and what made it a great place to open the door to everybody to make this their home, so thank you for the opportunity.
Great, thank you. And I'd also like to turn now our appreciation and time and attention to Councilmember Bill Jensen, who has been on the Town Council since 1999, so want to thank him very much and come say thanks and give the opportunity, Bill.
Thank you. We'll get.
All right, you have the floor.
Well, I'm kind of short of words, although I know the council thinks that that doesn't happen. I'm certainly living proof that there should be term limits, but especially that, you know, if you stay this long, bad things happen to you, such as you lose your hair, what little gray is left, and you pork out. But I would like to say that it's been a pleasure to work with everyone on the town staff and with the mayor, and mayor, I would like to say thank you for an outstanding job that you've done. You have run outstanding meetings, and I think you've been extremely fair on all of your appointments to the various committees and boards. You've done it in a way that is all-encompassing for all political thoughts, you have placed those people on the boards in a very understanding way, and I thank you for that. I really appreciate our town manager, it's been an honor to work with such an honorable man, thank you. And for the town staff, we do, we have an outstanding town staff, everybody should be proud of them, they work like crazy in ugly weather sometimes and just do an outstanding job, so I'm very appreciative to have had the opportunity to be here, thank you.
Well, and I guess this is my time. The last time I tried to write something this hard, it was a 100-page term paper for my master's degree. When I tried to write something for today, I was failing for words. Where to start? And I'll go ahead and apologize now if I run on a little bit, that tends to happen. Apex is where I grew up, I feel like it's my town, not that I own it and control it, but that I'm privileged to be a part of it. I grew up walking to town, thinking that I had tons of independence when I was 10 years old, only to find out 10, 15 years later that my parents were following me about a quarter-mile behind. But, you know, Old Raleigh Road didn't have many cars, and it was a 55 mile an hour speed limit then, and it was called Town Pond Road. That's because the town pond was down at the end, we now call it Apex Lake, we now walk all the way around it, but that was where we got our water before Jordan Lake. I spent a lot of time downtown, I've seen storefronts come and go, the buildings have been the same, and the buildings have been the same for 100 years. And I've had some of my family from out of town tell me that they've seen the North Carolina Weekend piece, and occasionally on Channel 4 where they see me talk about the two fires that happened downtown changed what was a disaster at the time, now turns out to be one of the blessings and things that we look back at, all the buildings were rebuilt in brick, and that was in somewhere around '06 and 1911, maybe somewhere around there, but because they were all, most of them were built within a 15, 20-year period of each other, after time passed, they start to look alike but different. Every building has its own look, but yet they're the same, and that's the kind of thing that when people drive through and they go, wow, Apex is such a cool little town, and I say, yep, it's not as little as it used to be, but it's still got a character. I'll tell you, one of the most enjoyable things I did the last four years was to sit on a bench and just watch and sit and enjoy and see what was going on down there. I went to Bockham Elementary School by walking to school, I went to Apex Elementary School by walking to school, I went to Apex Junior High School by riding my bike to school. I did ride the bus on snowy days, rainy days, but I also took advantage of the fact that the school was easy to get to, and in looking back at it, it seemed farther then than it does now. Seems a lot closer now, yet, you know, I get calls from people about carpool lines are so long, and I say, how many kids from other households are in your car? Zero. Okay, well, put them on a bus. You know, you can get your kids to school, and they will appreciate going to the school more if they learn to walk and ride their bike there, because they'll learn along the way. There are more sidewalks now than ever, we didn't have that many sidewalks, in fact, some of the older ones you can see here on Salem Street. I'd like to reach back just a little bit, when I first did something for Town of Apex just as a volunteer parent, got, ultimately became the disc golf course, put in eventually the Apex Nature Park, back in 2003, I started out just making a presentation to the Parks and Recreation Board that we ought to have disc golf in Apex. Nobody knew what it was on the board. Now, we take it for granted, but in '03, not that many people had heard about it, and when I realized that they got that on the plan and it was gonna make a difference, that invigorated me, and I started calling around, what else can I do? What else can I do? Because I was hooked on the juice of making a difference for my town, and that's how I ended up on the planning board. And give a shout-out to Diane Ken, because Diane saw me when I was just a citizen with a bit of energy but zero understanding of planning, and who knew one day that that knowledge that I was picking up then, reading the UDO about every other night for about three pages or until I couldn't take it anymore? And anybody who's tried to read some of the UDA knows what I'm talking about, it's really better as a reference than it is a reader. But then I ran for Town Council, and I served on Town Council for four years and was able to do things that I hope in the hindsight made a difference for Apex. I learned a lot about town government as a council member, reviewing the budgets, talking to the town manager, talking to the different staff members. As mayor, I had a whole new appreciation. I saw now a town manager, Drew was our assistant town manager, when Bruce retired, we asked Drew to stick around while we find a permanent one, and as we wrote kind of a list of everything that we were looking for in a town manager, we started looking at Drew and going, you know, he's already kind of, he's already, not kind of, he's already doing all this. We could save ourselves a lot of time and effort, I mean, if he was just kind of like keeping the motor warm for us, that's fine, but he was actually doing a really good job. And so, this council wisely offered him a full-time job as town manager, and it was only until later that I realized how smart that was, when all the other mayors started saying, oh, we were hoping Drew was gonna come available. We've got him now. I would like to say we locked him into a contract, but it doesn't quite work that way, but Drew's been great for this town, and I appreciate you, Drew. Personally, whatever values I have, I owe to my parents, Ross and Nancy, right there, they come tonight, thank you, they came a half-mile from outside the town limits. And that's not joking, they live on the other side of the Peakway. I owe a lot to my wife Cheryl, who's supported me through all of my energy and whims to serve the town. Where'd you go, Cheryl? Oh, there you are, there's Cheryl, she deserves every bit of a round of applause even though she doesn't want it. And I'll probably be in so much trouble for doing that. I'd like to also thank all the staff members, Drew, that you have either promoted, hired, or put in place, and more importantly, given them the culture that I believe is important for this town to be caring and efficient, to care about their work, to want to work here, to look forward to coming to work, instead of the old traditional, what people joke about being a bureaucrat or a government employee and the jokes around that. what people joke about being a bureaucrat or a government employee and the jokes around that. What I see here is people who want to come to work. They work hard to make a difference for their town. They don't always look for any kind of glory, just the standard amount of performance, merit, recognition that would happen under any HR. They have done a fantastic job. I'd like to thank all the council members that I've worked with, every single one of you, and those who are not here tonight as well. Obviously, in case it's not apparent, the mayor doesn't vote. The mayor has no power. I have no staff. I had no budget. So, the only thing I ever had is influence. When I could use it, I would try. If I couldn't influence, I accepted whatever somebody wanted to do. It takes a majority on a council to make a decision. I took a lot of heat from citizens when I didn't make a decision, but I felt like that was partly my role, is to kind of be a shield a bit for some of the fire and flames that come from people who are unhappy. To also tell people difficult truths when they only want to see their small bit, how it affects them. But if it's not a majority good, then we, I try to approach that from an education perspective, not a dismissal perspective. Lastly, or next to last, I'd like to challenge the incoming council members. Please keep all of Apex in mind as you do your job. All of us try to do that. We're all human. We occasionally fall prey to our own biases, but I encourage you to try to do what's best for all. Lastly, to Jacques Gilbert. You are Apex High School, my friend. You were born and bred here. You grew up here, walking the streets and sidewalks, a lot like I did. We won't talk about the ways that we might have gotten in trouble, or might not have, right? But I'm turning over what I believe to be a very functional town. Very functional council, very functional government. I hope you don't let me down, my friend. I trust in you. With that said, what's the phrase? If anybody wants to, albeit Poor Richards? Anybody know that one from the office? No?
The office? Okay. Michael Scott? Alright.
Mr. Dozier has a presentation.
Oh, I'm done. Okay, thank you. Oh, thank you.
So, thank you, Mayor Olive. And when I thought about doing this this evening, I thought about the fact that you are someone whose family comes from Apex, and that's rare. I don't come from Apex. I love it. And so, I think yours, I know that your service and the dedication that your family also has shown is something that, is something to be proud of. And so, on behalf of the Town of Apex, the council employees, we want to thank you for your service. And I know you already told the story, but you, your service really began with your family. Wanted to spend more time with your son, and coming up with, right, the disc golf. And now, we have this great nature park and other things that you are responsible for pushing the town towards. So, I just want to say that we're going to present you with something. Before I say that is, I hope this is enough, because you already got some streets named after you, so
That's funny. How about a park?
Well, well, don't push it. So, Mayor Lance Olive, the Town of Apex, North Carolina, December 2015 through December 2019, in appreciation of your leadership and vision helping to guide Apex to become a vibrant and progressive community in which to live, work, and play, we present this to you.
Thank you. Thank you all. I will find a prominent place for this. Oh, do I need to adjourn the meeting before I? Alright. Okay, I'll, well, they've already nailed my gavel to a board, so. There's a new one. That's great. We'll take off the "Made in" sticker later. Alright, well, thank you. We've covered everything we have. At this point, this concludes this council's service to the Town of Apex, and we will adjourn this meeting, which will be followed by a very short recess as some things reset, and then the restart of the next meeting. Thank you. Thanks, Don. Thank you for being.
I don't know. We'll try, we'll try. We might have lost. I think we might have lost.
It's alright.
Doing this will be friends here. I missed, I missed finding my buddy here. Okay. Haven't got a chance to tell the crowd, but I mean, that you've done yet? It's been a busy meeting, but I've.
Yeah.
I mentioned to him already when you, you asked me to ask him about it. Get it, get it somewhere, weren't you? I have to brag about it. Before this, I've been here. Yeah, well, they, they kind of snap in place now, right? They're easier than. Well, it's great to meet you. It's a lot.
This isn't yours, is it?
Oh, what color is it? It's pretty weird, right? Yeah, the good scene, huh? Is this permit, or is this a? So. Maybe order a closer tour. Is this me? Very comfy in this spot. Right. Right. Pushing it to the middle. I have enough room. I just like it all out. Leave the outside open.
So. Whoever you want to stand up. I still take your. Family. Yous. You're right.
This is jobs. And this is from students. Your lobby episodes. I don't know. I feel like I should do this. I gotta, I gotta get this. I can't do that.
Do you want any water?
Um, oh, yeah, I'll take some.
I got some.
Okay, thank you. So, I'm not going to go to the restroom. I gotta get some. It won't take long, right? Oh, I feel like I'm not.
That's like a long one.
Oh, this is going to be longer. I need to go to the restroom now. Is that one going to be full right there? I think I'm gonna go, I'll go this way. Oh, I gotta go all the way. How long, I'm good. How long will this take? An hour? Oh, okay, I'm good. I'm good. Okay. Alright. Alright. I don't have a gavel. Yeah, I need to all gavel. We're having too much fun here.
Yeah. Take all that sticker that they were coming.
That's so funny. Made in Taiwan. Okay, so you got the box? So, you got the box, right? Um, and I, like, like, wait me two minutes. Two minutes. I think I'm good. I just want to think about. Said that was nice, right? So, I'm just trying to think of something to say about. I'm going to say something really very short. And then hand over the gavel. And then he's going to do share. Okay. Yep, that's right. Okay, just when I do that, okay. How many minutes has it been? Do you know? I'm going to be ready in a minute. Okay, that's not bad.
I'm good with the, no initial. I'm not sure if you're asking us. S-D? I never use it. No. This is fine. Yeah. It's fine. Daniel, I'm just not a big fan of my building. So is Brett. Thank you.
Town manager? Ready, ready? No, no, they took that, hold on.
So, good evening, everyone. So, I want to make sure that everyone finds a seat, or else joins the meeting from upstairs via livestream, if you don't have on a uniform and you're serving this evening. Okay. So, today, it's still December 3 Town Council meeting, and we are now going to start the administrative part of our organizational proceedings. And so, first up, we will have proceedings with Mayor Jacques Gilbert, Mayor-elect Jacques Gilbert. We'll ask your family to join you, and we'll ask Ms. Hosh to start.
You know how to do this already, don't you? Okay, Mr. Gilbert, if you will repeat after me and welcome family. I, Jacques Kerboire Gilbert, do solemnly affirm.
I, Jacques Kerboire Gilbert, do solemnly affirm.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution, laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As mayor of the Town of Apex.
As mayor of the Town of Apex.
North Carolina, so help me God.
North Carolina, so help me God.
I, Jacques Kerboire Gilbert.
I, Jacques Kerboire Gilbert.
Do solemnly and sincerely affirm.
Do solemnly and sincerely affirm. Do solemnly and sincerely affirm...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance...
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance...
To the state of North Carolina...
To the state of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers and authorities...
And the constitutional powers and authorities.
Which are or may be established...
Which are or may be established...
For the government thereof...
For the government thereof.
And that I will endeavor to support...
And I will endeavor to support.
Maintain and defend...
Maintain and defend.
The Constitution of said state...
The Constitution of said state.
Not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States...
Not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States.
To the best of my knowledge and ability, so help me God.
To the best of my knowledge and ability, so help me God.
Congratulations, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I don't know why all you people are here.
We're expecting food.
Reception after. I just have to start, first of all, by saying, "God is good." Bear with me. I got a lot of people to thank. A lot of people. And I won't be able to cover everyone in here today. I gotta start with my family. My beautiful wife, Miss Shara. Give her a hand, please. And my beautiful daughter, who is actually my campaign manager. She did a great job. Give her a hand. And my handsome son, Logan. I also wanna talk about how I got here. Mayor Lance Olive talked about being able to walk the sidewalks. The 601st Street, Justice Heights. Well, I had a mother and father that didn't allow me to walk the sidewalks. They kept me in the yard. So I wanna recognize my parents. First recognize my mom. Lily, if you would, please stand, so they can see you. Thank you. And then my dad, who showed me perseverance. Thank you, Dad. See how he posed for the camera, that's why I got it for him. I also have to mention my siblings who are here tonight. My oldest brother, Jesse. Thank you. And my youngest brother, Willis, who got all my muscles, but he's here tonight. I also have to do a shout-out to my sister, who is watching on livestream in Minnesota. Hey, Bianca. I have a grandmother here, too. Grandma Gilbert, who's here tonight. Thank you, Grandma, for everything you've done. And I know I have grandparents who are not here. They have gone home. But this would've been a moment they wanna see, and I know they're watching right now. And they're rejoicing. They're rejoicing. I have a lot, a lot, a lot, a lot of cousins. That's a joke, if you don't know about it, ask somebody. But a lot of people have helped me along the way. There were people who said, "In 2014, you're gonna be the mayor of Apex." And my response was, "You're out of your mind." And here we are. There's a lot of things I wanna say. But this is what I wanted to get across for my entire four years. I didn't come to be served. I come to serve the people. People first. And we saw it tonight. We saw compassion. The environment is already set. We talked about unity. And I look around this room and I see different people united. This is how we gotta move forward for Apex. And I know the team that's coming into this council, they're committed. I've had long talks with them. And they wanna do right for Apex. I gotta give a shout-out to the people who helped make me as well. My family, Apex Police Department. You know, the thing I would say as mayor, I know it's going to be, some may see it as a challenge, to be able to take care of everyone. But I would tell you, I learned in my 29 years as a police officer, I never responded to a call based on what a person looked like or what community they represented. Everybody received service from me. We're committed, and I'm gonna take that into the mayor role here for the Town of Apex. I gotta give a shout-out, and I say shout-out 'cause I'm just letting y'all know, I am here. I'm not gonna be your governmental mayor. Mayor Lance Olive has carried the baton well. And I really appreciate him and the council for getting us this far. We do have work to do. And it's all about building bridges and establishing more relationships. And that's how we get things done. So all of you, you know who you are. I can't mention everyone. We'd be here for days. But I thank you for everything. And I encourage you to remember this. We're all in this together. Let's stay united. And I guarantee you, we'll get a lot of things done. So what I'd like to do right now, as I move forward, because I know there will be what some people may call challenges, but I see them as opportunities to show who we are, that we can problem-solve and we can get things done. So for the staff of the Town of Apex, I've had the pleasure of working with for many years. I'm telling y'all, they're the best in the nation. Sorry, TJ, are you here? But I wanna do this right now, because it's that important to me. I wanna have the pastor I was raised in the church. And I watched this man from afar, and I followed his footsteps. He was my youth pastor, and he went on to be a lieutenant with the Raleigh Police Department, he retired there. And now he's a pastor of St. Mary AME Church. And I would like to call him up right now. Come on up, please. And I gotta add this as well. He also officiated my wedding. So, that's very important. And then, he took me to a point. And then God moved me to a different direction. Caver Chapel Cary, right here in Apex. So I'm gonna ask the senior pastor, Rodney Fitz Senior, to come up. And I'm gonna ask you guys to have free comments, and then I want you to cover me before I take my seat.
After you. After you. After you, you were first.
I just think this is a privilege to be here and to acknowledge what God has done. Is that I have seen this young man grow into a awesome young man. And I have no doubt in my mind that he will be the greatest mayor that this town has ever had.
Oh my goodness, I've never heard a preacher go so short. Pass the offering plate. Pass the offering. Now we will collect an offering. We don't wanna hear no change. Oh, it's good to see you all, and I'm so happy, good to meet you pastors, and so happy to be here tonight. Thank you for inviting us. And I certainly do, I think we all would agree that we can never go wrong when we pray, when we put our plans before the Lord. The Bible says that the heart of the king is in the hand of the Lord. So let us continue to pray. Let us continue to ask God's hand upon the mayor and the town council and allow God to bless our community, okay? Are we supposed to pray too? Okay. After you.
After you.
Let us pray. Almighty God, great is your faithfulness, Lord unto us. Even on this December evening, new mercies we see. Your word saying every good and perfect gift comes from the Father of lights. Our new mayor has never claimed to be perfect, but he is good. Good to those who know him, good to the community he has served, and now good to the community that he will lead. So we begin this day with a prayer of thanksgiving for our new mayor, Jacques Gilbert. Yet even as we thank you that he is with us today, Father, we set him apart from this day for the task of leadership. Be with him, establish the works of his hand. Allow him to keep his heart of service even when some don't want to be served. Empower him to keep his tongue of eloquence even when the critics are harsh. Ensure his heart be full of hope even when hopelessness is around. Father, your word has shown us that good leadership demands good character. So we thank you for Jacques' heart, his integrity, and his service to you. And Father, give him a soft hand but a stiff backbone. Give him a quiet determination that marches toward justice no matter what he might face. Let him be as wise as a serpent and innocent as a dove. Lord, all he will need is you to provide the strength for the day and bright hope for tomorrow. In the name of Jesus Christ, we pray, amen. Amen. And the church said? God bless you. There you go, that's my... Alright, come on, come on, y'all stand with me there, come on. Come on, bow your hands and your hearts. Lord, we love you tonight. We thank you for your great love toward us. Thank you for sending your son, Jesus, to die for our sins and to save us, Lord, and to... Lord, fill us. We're praying, Lord, your hand upon, Lord, this council, Lord, as a team. Lord, that we would lay down our own agendas and, Lord, that we would pick up your agenda. And, God, that you would lead us and help us to be servants as you, Jesus, came to serve, not to be served. Pray that same blessing and spirit upon our new mayor. Thank you for the outgoing mayor and all that he has done. Bless him and his family and the Gilberts. And, Lord, show us that we can also help in some way in our community. In Jesus' name we pray. Only if you agree, I want you to say amen.
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 They want a picture. Yes, sir.
A picture?
Yeah.
I'm new to this, y'all. Got it? Come on, Pastor, Pastor, do the...
So, welcome. So I thought about honoring Mayor Jacque Gilbert. I thought about the fact that Jacque does have a bunch of cousins. And so, after this, I'll have him tell you that story. But seriously, Jacque and his family also are native to Apex and also have an impressive track history on the things that they feel that are dear to their heart, which is putting family and community as a priority and the work that they do. And so, with your commitment to, the town has already been demonstrated by your decades, you know, of work in our police department. And I often saw you sitting out there, and now you're up here. And so I know the view is different, but I believe, even though the view is different, your vision is still, you know, gonna be great. And I think you'll be quite an advocate for all that, you know, we need to do in Apex. And so, on behalf of the town, the staff, and the council, I look forward to serving with you and your leadership in this role. So before we start, I'm gonna turn this meeting over to you. I'll go back into my role. We wanna present you with this. And this, the folks can see, is Jacque's very own gavel. Did you see the Mayor Olive took his? And his, if you noticed, that in Mayor Olive's plaque, his gavel fit into that. And so, this is what we have for you today. And it just has a nice... And has Jacque K. Gilbert, Mayor, Town of Apex. And this is all yours, and you will start this, using this right now?
Thank you so much. So we're good? Okay. Alright, this view is different. My goodness. Alright, so we're gonna go ahead and continue on with the organizational proceedings. And I would like to call up now Cheryl Stallings for her oath of office. And also her family as well.
Alright, y'all gonna, okay. Alright. So if you would, do your right hand?
Okay.
Okay. I'm now gonna speak at the oath of office. Are you ready?
I am.
Alright. I, Cheryl Faith Stallings...
I, Cheryl Faith Stallings...
Do solemnly affirm...
Do solemnly affirm...
That I will support...
That I will support...
And maintain...
And maintain...
The Constitution and laws...
The Constitution and laws...
Of the United States...
Of the United States...
And the Constitution and laws...
And the Constitution and laws...
Of North Carolina...
Of North Carolina...
Not inconsistent therewith...
Not inconsistent therewith...
And that I will faithfully discharge...
And that I will faithfully discharge...
The duties of my office...
The duties of my office...
As council member...
As council member...
For the Town of Apex...
For the Town of Apex...
North Carolina...
North Carolina...
So help me God...
So help me God.
I, Cheryl Faith Stallings...
I, Cheryl Faith Stallings...
Do solemnly and sincerely...
Do solemnly and sincerely...
Affirm...
Affirm...
That I will support...
That I will support...
The Constitution...
The Constitution...
Of the United States...
Of the United States...
That I will be faithful...
That I will be faithful...
And bear true allegiance...
And bear true allegiance...
To the state of North Carolina...
To the state of North Carolina...
And to the constitutional powers...
And to the constitutional powers...
And authorities...
And authorities...
Which are or may...
Which are or may...
Be established for...
Be established for...
The government thereof...
The government thereof...
And that I will...
And that I will...
Endeavor to support...
Endeavor to support...
Maintain...
Maintain...
And defend...
And defend...
The Constitution...
The Constitution...
Of said state...
Of said state...
Not inconsistent...
Not inconsistent...
With the Constitution...
With the Constitution...
Of the United States...
Of the United States...
To the best of my knowledge...
To the best of my knowledge...
And ability...
And ability...
So help me God...
So help me God...
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I just want to first thank you all for being here. I am honored and humbled and blessed to be serving on your Apex Town Council. Like Jacque said, this is about all of us, the collective good, our community. There is some work to be done, but we are an amazing town, and this is just about getting better. It's just making the peak of good living a little bit better. I'd like to thank my family for being here, my husband Mark, my sister-in-law Laurie and Molly, and their spouses, and my uncle Bobby and Roy for being here. My three campaign pillars were about quality of life, collaborative partnerships, and environmental and financial stewardship. So I am committed to those values and serving you, but at the end of the day, this is about the collective good. I know this is an amazing council who is smart and compassionate and wants good things for Apex. I know this staff is amazing because I was in the Peak Academy class, and these classes ran from April to October, and we met about twice a month for three hours in each meeting, and we learned all about the government services of this town. We have over 500 very dedicated and committed town employees, so we are in good hands. But that doesn't mean we can't do better, and we can't continue to strive to be the best that we can be. Not only do I thank my family, but I thank many of my friends who are here, who supported me along the way. And I'm just honored and blessed, and I'm very much looking forward to this opportunity. Like Jacque, I do not see, I am not here to be served, and I don't consider myself a politician. I consider myself a public servant, and I'm here to serve you, and I'm looking forward to the opportunity. Thank you.
All right. Okay, thank you Cheryl. All right, welcome. All right. At this time, we will have Terry Mahaffey to come up and with his family, and he will have his oath of office administered by Greg Ford, Chair of Wake County Board of Commissioners.
Terry, as your family gathers, if I may, Mr. Mayor, take a point of personal privilege, not that I have any personal privileges here in the Town of Apex, but on behalf of the Board of Commissioners and all of Wake County Government, I just want to say this is a privilege that you've asked me here today on behalf of the county in a spirit of partnership for all the opportunities that are moving forward in a very fast-growing part of our county. So in the spirit of that cooperation, it is a privilege to administer this oath of office to you. Are you ready?
I'm ready, let's do it.
All right.
All right, guys. Just let me practice.
I, Terry Mahaffey.
I, Terry Mahaffey.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As council member of the Town of Apex.
As council member of the Town of Apex.
North Carolina.
North Carolina.
I, Terry Mahaffey.
I, Terry Mahaffey.
Do solemnly and sincerely affirm.
Do solemnly and sincerely affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
To the state of North Carolina.
To the state of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers and authorities.
And to the constitutional powers and authorities.
Which are or may be established.
Which are or may be established.
For the government thereof.
For the government thereof.
And that I will endeavor to support.
And I will endeavor to support.
Maintain and defend.
Maintain and defend.
The Constitution of said state.
The Constitution of said state.
Not inconsistent.
Not inconsistent.
With the Constitution of the United States.
With the Constitution of the United States.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
Congratulations.
It's cool, it's cool. All right, thanks. Thank you so much for, uh, for being here, everyone. And I want to start just by thanking my family. Leah Page and Emily, thank you for coming up and helping me with this. And Lindsay, thank you so much for rushing over here after your meeting, and I'm still glad you were able to make it, I really appreciate it. It was awesome. Commissioner Ford, thanks for coming out. Commissioner Adamson, there you are. I appreciate it, it means a lot to me that you guys come here, and I appreciate your support. And I just want to thank a couple people who helped along the way. Kevin, thank you so much for all the help on the campaign, thank you for support and your encouragement throughout the years and the past couple months especially. Right, Robert, Gwen, thank you guys for all your help, I couldn't help without you guys. It takes a lot of effort and a lot of volunteers to run one of these things. It's a very, very lonely, lonely, uh, effort sometimes. And with all my friends Jackie, I don't want to forget about you, you're a big part of all this and all the graphic design work. Man, this is, this is awesome. I guess, uh, I also want to thank the staff, and I look forward to the next couple of years and getting on with some of the stuff that I've been talking about for a while. And I'm really excited to be working with this council, and Jacque especially, I'm excited about your leadership that you've shown tonight and that you're going to show the next couple of years. This is going to be great, and I'm ready to get started. So you guys ready to get started? All right, let's do it.
All right, one more round of applause for your new town council. I'm going to ask you to bear with me as I get my bearings, obviously this is, I'm a novice at this, so we're going to get through it though. Uh, what we have next on the agenda is selection of mayor pro temp. So what I would like to do at this time is read to you the duties of mayor pro temp as explained in our code of ordinances. So the, in accordance with applicable state laws, the town council shall appoint one of its members to act as mayor pro temp to perform the duties of the mayor in the mayor's absence or disability. The mayor pro temp, as such, shall have no fixed term of office, but shall serve in such capacity at the pleasure of the remaining members of the town council. So what we would do at this time is open it up for nominations for that role on our council.
I would like to nominate Nicole Dozier for mayor pro temp.
All right, we have a nomination motion in a second.
Is it okay if I say a few things?
Absolutely.
So, um, for the past six years, Nicole Dozier has served here on the town council. She's had quite a few accomplishments in that period of time, and I'm not going to name all of them because I wouldn't be able to stop. But just a few here. The Think Apex Initiative, that was created to provide an annual day of service and to recognize people through awards, businesses, and people that are outstanding in the community. She was a founder of the Environmental Committee. Through the Personnel Committee, she initiated a policy of paid family leave and expanded the definition of family under FMLA for our town employees. She's also worked toward a more diverse and equitable environment for our town employees, and I think continuing in this role of mayor pro temp would be great if you would accept.
I accept. Thank you, Audra, thank you everyone, I appreciate that. I look forward to working with all of you and, and you know, with all the citizens, just getting it done for Apex, and I just appreciate that. So thank you for the support, and I'm proud to serve Apex.
Are there any more nominations? Okay, so what we'd like to do at this time is I will take a vote. So all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, interposed? All right, congratulations.
Thank you.
So we'll do the oath of office now, and you want me to join you down there, or go ahead, Ms. Donner, to do it?
Where Ms. Donner says.
Okay.
I, Nicole L. Dozier.
I, Nicole L. Dozier.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
And of the, of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of North Carolina.
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office as mayor pro temp.
The duties of my office as mayor pro temp.
For the Town of Apex, North Carolina.
For the Town of Apex, North Carolina.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, Nicole L. Dozier.
I, Nicole L. Dozier.
Do solemnly and sincerely affirm.
Do solemnly and sincerely affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
To the state of North Carolina.
To the state of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers and authorities.
And to the constitutional powers and authorities.
Which are or may be established.
Which are or may be established.
For the government thereof.
For the government thereof.
And that I will endeavor to support.
And that I will endeavor to support.
Maintain and defend.
Maintain and defend.
The Constitution of said state.
The Constitution of said state.
Not inconsistent with the Constitution.
Not inconsistent with the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you. Thank you.
So I would like to add to what Audra said. You have done so much for this community, and I know you're, you're invested in this community, and you are doing a lot on your, um, your main role, and then also for the council. So I just want to thank you for all the work you've done over the years and encouraging me as well. So I told you the only way I would take or go for mayor is if you stuck around, so I appreciate you joining.
Thank you, Mayor Gilbert.
All right, we'll move on to agenda. Next up is appointments of standing committees and liaisons. So what we'll do now is I will appoint those committees quarterly, so if you would, just track along. This is the moment everyone is waiting for. All right, in no certain order, I'll start with the Economic Development Committee. So as chair, myself will be the chair, and second will be council member Stallings. Environmental Committee, as chair, Mayor Pro Temp Dozier. And second, council member Gant. On our Finance Committee, council member Killingsworth is chair, and second is council member Stallings. We had a Parks and Recreation Committee, but we noticed there's some overlap there, redundancy, so I have chose to eliminate that committee. So we no longer go with that. Personnel Committee. Chair, Mayor Pro Temp Dozier, and second, myself. Planning Committee. As chair, council member Gant, and second, council member Mahaffey. And our Liaisons, Chamber of Commerce, Apex Chamber of Commerce, as primary, myself, and alternate Mayor Pro Temp Dozier. Apex Downtown Business Association, um, as primary, council member Mahaffey, and then alternate, myself. Transportation Advisory Commission of Campo, I'm the primary on that as well, and alternate is council member Mahaffey. Triangle J Council of Governments. Primary, council member Gant, and alternate, council member Killingsworth. Any questions? Comments? All right. Thank you very much for your attention to that, and I look forward to everyone serving in those roles. I believe we can make tremendous impact in collaboration with those committees. And I just want us to continue to communicate that with each other and make sure that we're doing the best for Apex. So now we move into new business, and we have two items on new business for council to consider. New business one is motion to approve the calendar of town council meetings for 2020 and 2021. So with that, we set the start time of the meetings and then also set the location of the meeting. So if I may mention, that Apex Code of Ordnances, section 227, requires that council adopt a regular meeting schedule at its organizational meeting, which is tonight. And the council can adopt a two-year calendar and modify that at a subsequent meeting. So if we can have, I know Terry, you had talked about some things with that, so if you want to kind of take the lead on that?
Sure. I, we had some discussion about the calendar, and it's clear from the discussion the past couple of days, we need to talk a little more about it. There are some, a list of changes in terms of having to do with the planning board days, having to do with holidays, end of year, some other meetings. So per the code of ordinances, we do need to adopt a schedule today, and I think what we're going to ask staff to do is to have a little discussion about some of the things we're interested in, and then maybe bring that back to a work session to alter it, make some smaller changes later. So my motion right now is to approve the option A, first and third week for 2020, and option B, second and fourth week for 2021. And I'll adopt that as our base calendar. And I just have some general comments on top of that about some other modifications I'm interested in seeing that we could hopefully bring back later, perhaps at a retreat or a work session for the, for the matter. Let's only pull it up here. In general, um, one thing I noticed when looking through the calendar is that when you have a month which starts on a Tuesday, you get this odd situation where the planning board meeting is the day before a town council meeting, and I think that should be avoided. So I have a list of specific changes here, mostly dealing with months that begin with a Tuesday, trying to move the planning board meeting up a week, so it still occurs in a week between two town council meetings, that's something I'm interested in. Additionally, there's, um, the Parks and Rec Committee Advisory Board, meeting on the last Wednesday of every month, means that in November and December, they're meeting right next to Thanksgiving, or right next to Christmas, or the week between Christmas and New Year's. So I would ask to consider either canceling those meetings and moving up a week for the convenience of those people as well. So I have some notes here, and I don't want to make that part of the motion, I just want that to be considered as we take this back for further discussion. But for now, I move first and third for 2020, second and fourth for 2021.
Okay, so first and third for 2020, and second and fourth for 2021.
And why the difference moving to second and fourth for 2021?
There was some discussion among some members about having a longer transition to changing the calendar, and not doing it tomorrow. So putting it a year out gives us a lot of time to consider it and talk more about it that the, when it comes up at a work session or retreat.
Because I think my concern was 2021, how it impacts Thanksgiving and Christmas, looking at that calendar. How that might impact, you know, staff with holiday travel plans.
We could consider canceling those meetings closer to the holidays, and I think that's what we've done in the. what we've done in the, in the past when it's close to holidays.
All right, well, there is a motion.
Can I?
In the time, are we doing that now?
Can I make a friendly amendment?
Sure.
To that motion of possible start time at 6:00 instead of 7:00, and ending at 10:00 instead of 11:00.
So if it's appropriate, I'll add mine to that, and so what I would actually like to do is to have a hard stop at 10:00 PM. So we would be, that's four hours of meeting, and then, but at 9:30, have a temperature check. Do we need to push through or, you know, stop? But I think the hard stop on should be 10:00 PM, no time. And then, once we get further, I do have some suggestions on some dates, some that I would like to cancel to give people some respite.
Okay, so we have a motion for first and third in 2020, and then second and fourth in 2021, with a change of a 6:00 PM start time and any time of 10:00 PM. Did I miss anything?
I would say ready to 2021 with consideration. I think we're going to like, you know.
All right, with consideration to?
Yeah, for staff to come back, yeah. I think that's like what you said.
And I do want to add, with this being so close to 2020, I want to make sure that the staff is taken care of and we do factor their input into what we're doing because it's such a, you know, quick change for them.
So I'm not going to pose 6:00 PM, but my preference is actually 6:30 because I think people, some people work till 6:00, and getting from Raleigh or RTP down here, by 6:30 is easier than 6:00 sometimes. I mean, I can do it personally, but I just think for the public, it's better to have a little bit later than that. I like the 10:00 PM cutoff, though, by the way, but. That's my preference. That's my preference, is to have it 6:30, but I don't know what everybody else feels like.
Well, I can tell you, as a staff, former staff member, I've sat right out there till 2:00 in the morning on one occasion, so it is challenging to come back the next day and serve. So thank you for all your input. So again, we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second? All right, we have a motion and a second. Further discussion?
I would also, go ahead.
Okay, so what I'd like to do is consider going ahead and canceling some meetings to provide staff, particularly staff who are behind the scenes, getting things ready for people, or staff who you see all the time, to take advantage of having a longer break with their families or whatever they would like to do, and to be able to plan for that. So I would like us to consider at a date later on, like a workshop, but consider canceling the meetings on June 16th and then July 7th. That would provide a nice long summer break for staff or people who come here all the time, related to their, to applicants and even the council. I would also like to consider canceling the December 15th, which would, for 2020, which would give people, you know, a nice break to not have to come back on the 15th and prepare for holidays and whatever they like to do. For 2021, I know we're going to talk more about that, but we could consider canceling June 15th and July 6th, similar to what I just said. And then in 2021, because it would be municipal elections, we could consider canceling the November 2nd in 2021. So it just depends on what we do, whether we do first and third, I mean, yeah, first and third, or second and fourth. It just depends on what we do with that.
Second and fourth, right, so that would be moved.
We.
Consider it.
For 2021.
Consider that.
Right.
Yeah. And then we could consider canceling on my birthday, December 21st. Actually, I, actually, yeah, yeah. Yeah, exactly. And so those are just some of the things I like to consider to give, especially staff, a longer break. And also, it's not like going into recess, like the General Assembly, when they're recessed, they're out, and so if there's something needs to happen, then we get a quorum and we have a meeting. So it's not like we're not reachable, it's just could give us a break, but really more about giving the staff a break, who has to be here every, you know, every two weeks throughout the year, all the time. So that's, that's my suggestion for us to look at during the workshop. And for staff to come back and see what that means for other things, how that works.
So also, November 3rd, 2020 is Election Day as well. So we might consider either moving that a day later, like we've done this year.
Just have it on the Wednesday.
Wednesday, November the 4th. So move from the 3rd to the 4th.
Okay. Sounds like there's a lot of moving parts to this, and certainly we'll rely on manager Drew Abus to help us out with that. So much more work to be done, but again, we have a motion and a second with the aforementioned conditions. So with that, I will call for a.
Clear. What about the start time? Are we thinking 6:00 or 6:30?
So the motion, do we, you have a preference? Do we have a preference?
I had a preference for 6:00, and I have to leave work early to get here by 6:00, too. But, I mean, I'm okay to go with the will of the council for that 6:00, but also the staff, if that helps, who are here all day.
Does 6:00 help staff better?
We serve at the pleasure of the council, so whenever you all want to meet.
So may I make a friendly suggestion?
Okay, we got a suggestion by?
I, I would suggest that, you know, before, we've had kind of a hard stop with signing up for public forum, maybe if people trickle in late at our 6:00 meetings, there can be a second time to say, okay, if anyone's trickled in late that wants to sign up for public forum, you need to do so now. That way, it's a reminder.
I think that's a good idea because part of the issue that councilman Gant raises is people, commuters, might not be able to get here by 6:00 and sign up. That's, that's the big danger. The actual public hearing they want to be here for might not be till 7:00 or 7:30. So if we give them an opportunity to either sign up right as you're about to do it, or maybe at the end when public comment, the list you have in place is finished, we call one last chance, is anyone else not going to just sign up, maybe came in late, I think that might mitigate some of the, some of the issues with the 6:00 PM start.
I mean, I'm not going to pose, I still think 6:30, but I'm not going to pose it.
So what we have is 6:00 PM start time added to, again, the aforementioned information I presented, so we're good with that.
Starting in 2020, not the next year.
2020, 2020. All right, I'll call for the vote. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion carries unanimously, and we'll move to new business number two, and council member Killingsworth, discussion regarding town council resolutions.
So earlier, I sent an email to all of you regarding some of the resolutions that I was thinking that came to my mind for the coming year, and I'm not going to rehash all of them here, but I felt like it was just something that everyone needed to be aware of, that, hey, it's on my radar, that it might be coming up. You know, it would be great if most of these were proclamations, but, you know, I also know that's your purview, so up to your decision. So my preference for this is to have a more thorough discussion at the town workshop that's upcoming, so we can talk about details of that.
Any other discussion on the item? None? I'm hearing none?
So you're just asking for more discussion at the workshop?
Yes, basically just letting you know if y'all look it over, and then anything that comes to your mind as well to add to that, or if you wanted, you know, discuss about why something would be on there.
Okay, so what it sounds is that we're just, you bring it to our radar.
That's right.
So, which will be forthcoming, we're going to have some more discussion about it, maybe in a workshop in the future. Okay? All right. Thank you for bringing that forth.
Sure.
All right. So we have covered everything. Again, I just want to say thank you for all coming out tonight. Very big moment for all of us, so, and you chose to share your time with us, so we really appreciate it. So we have no further business to conduct. So the meeting is adjourned at this time, and I do want to remind you that we have reception following the meeting in the lobby. All right?